It's nine o'clock and we welcome you to the City Commission meeting for November 21st, 2022. This morning, we have a presentation from Julie Townsend of the LDDA.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Good to see you all. We're very thankful in downtown, so happy Thanksgiving in advance to everyone before I get started. And welcome to Commissioner Simmons. I haven't officially met you yet, but welcome and congratulations on your appointment. Okay, so just a little refresher of what's happening in downtown. Actually, a refresher of what the LDDA is for those who may not know. The Lakeland Downtown Development Authority is a special taxing district. It's created by the legislature. The downtown properties pay an additional millage in property tax, and we invest those back into the district in various ways. Our goal is to promote businesses, protect interests, and propel the district forward. And our mission statement is to improve and stimulate the environment for economic development in a people-oriented downtown community. Our total income in this fiscal year, fiscal year 2023, is $824,262. It's the largest budget we've had since I have been affiliated with the organization, so that's afforded us to do some additional things, which I'll talk about towards the end. But 71% of that is taxes, and you can see that Farmers Market and First Friday, which are two big signature events, do generate income and pay for themselves, so they're not used, they're not supported by taxes. So the major thing I think that the public would recognize that we do is what they see in downtown, the fun things that they come to in downtown. Of course, we own and operate the First Fridays and the Farmers' Curb Market. We also do night markets. We've done those in cooperation with other organizations or entities, and we've done some on our own. We have Festive Flix, which is a fun, free movie on the promenade. We try to do those in conjunction with holidays, so we had one for Halloween, and we're having another coming up on the ninth for Christmas. And there's other activities that we do. We do Tasty Tuesdays. We do Festive Fridays. We partner with Historic Lakeland to do historic walking tours. And I'm proud to say that we're going to be partnering with the Lakeland Rotary Club this year to bring Spring Obsession back to Mon Park. So all of those things equal 88 events and activities that we produce each year or in conjunction with others, and I will have to say we are tired. We have more, those events generate over 260,000 visitors to the downtown area. We use our analytics, our foot traffic analytics called Placer AI. We can determine a very accurate estimate of the number of people that come to those large events, and so we're proud to say that we bring that many visitors to our lovely downtown area. The other fun thing that we are doing, or we have done for many years, I think this is our fifth year, is we actually partner with school, art students in the Polk County Schools to paint the windows of many of our businesses downtown. Not all of them are painted by the students, but the ones that are, those businesses actually pay the students, and that gives them some additional spending money during the Christmas holidays. So it's a lot of fun. The students really enjoy it. Gives them an opportunity to sort of, you know, deal with the business and sort of do the business side of that sort of thing, and that's just some samples over the years of what the students have produced. But it's not all fun and games in downtown Lakeland. We don't just do events. We do have some serious business that we like to share, and of course, when we have our serious side, we have to always get partnerships with the city because we are not a body of folks that can do all of these things on our own. You guys govern the city, and we need those partnerships. So one of the things that was listed as a priority for the LDDA was master planning with Public Works and the CRA and Community Economic Development departments to expand additional sidewalks, just like we did on Main Street. Everyone loved it, but we kind of pulled that out of the air. That wasn't necessarily part of a master plan, and I know that Public Works would very much like to see any additional expansions or changes to the physical environment of downtown thought out and planned out in a more strategic way. So we definitely want to partner with them and with the other organizations or departments to come up with something that might be a five, 10, 15, 20-year plan. In terms of transportation, we definitely want to continue to support the Squeeze. We are actually partnering with Rides, the Citrus Connection, to do some promotional activities with discounts for downtown businesses and using the tokens that were supposed to be the fare downtown, but now that it's free, 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 you don't need the tokens to use the Squeeze, but we're going to put those to good use by having, having them stamped with some discounts and some promotions for downtown businesses that want to participate and giving those out to the folks that ride the Squeeze. So we're looking at some better signage so that when folks do, they know where to park for the Squeeze. On Saturday, we have beautiful Lot B, which is pretty much vacant at all times, city-owned. It's a little off the beaten path in terms of being a place where the customers would consider that a fantastic parking space, but when you couple that with the ability of the Squeeze to pick you up on Saturday and drop you off at the foot of the Farmers Market or the First Friday events, then all of a sudden, it becomes a much more attractive use to park there. So we want to make sure that folks are aware of that. So we're going to add some signage on Saturdays, just little yard signs that say, "Park here," "Ride the Squeeze," things like that, to sort of draw attention to that parking lot. And of course, I know that there's already a shuttle to Bonnet Springs as part of the Ride Citrus routes, but just, you know, making sure that we have that connectivity from downtown to Bonnet Springs moving forward and what that might look like and being a part of that conversation. The other big priority is to slow traffic in downtown. Obviously, all downtown should be very pedestrian-friendly, but we do have, we don't have any posted speed limits in downtown, which I'm not necessarily advocating for because it's just more sign clutter, but we are looking for other ways to sort of reduce the speeds, and that might be adding four-way stops and decorative sidewalks and certainly bricking the streets. If you've ever driven down Nevada, which I'm sure we all have, you know that if you're going 20 miles an hour on Nevada, it feels uncomfortable. So we want to look at ways that we can, now that the milling of the roads is a little bit quicker, I've talked to some of the folks at Public Works about, you know, looking at when it's time to resurface Kentucky, for example, if we could possibly, in terms of that, again, that strategic plan, that master planning of downtown, really consider bringing those streets back to the brick that is under all of that asphalt. Parking, I love parking. It's my favorite subject. I have to take a deep breath about parking. So plenty of parking, plenty of parking downtown. One of the things that we would really like to see is, is the signage changed immediately. I know that we're going through a parking, another parking study. I know that we've had other entities that have talked about electronic signs. All of those things are positive and fine, but there are some things that we can do today that cost no money that can increase the amount of parking that the customers have in downtown. Two different issues: employee parking and customer parking. Those are two completely different issues and two completely different solution paths, but I care mostly about the customers. So there are things that we can do right now without spending any money, and so we'd really like to see those things done. And those really are mostly just the way we utilize the spaces, for example, in Main Street Garage. They're mostly empty, and we're still, you know, advertising that it's permit-only during the day. Why wouldn't we just immediately open that up to public parking and see what happens? You can still charge a dollar an hour. You can have them use the machines. We can use Park Mobile, but if we started advertising that that was open to the public, particularly in the holidays when we want people to come down and shop and eat, if we could just open that up to the public immediately, I think you would see that it would ease the parking, the concerns about parking in downtown overnight. And if I'm wrong, you can blame me. I'll take, I'll take it all. And lastly, clean and safe. We have hired a clean and safe manager, Alejandro Ali, as we like to call him. Let's wave, stand up, Princess Wave, Princess Wave. Thank you. Downtown clean and safe is very important. As you know, that we have recently, or last year I would say, we had, we hired a security company and had a single armed security guard, and that actually worked out very well. But one of the things that we learned was that there was a lot of issues that he was addressing for us, which was great, that really weren't security issues or, they weren't security issues. They were more on the clean, clean and safe side in terms of broken streetlights that were out or pavers that needed addressing. So all of those things usually funnel through me, and it's difficult to pivot from, you know, coming to City Hall and going to meetings and then, and then cleaning up trash in the alley, which I've done on the same day, dressed like this. But it's, it's helpful to have someone, now that we do have some extra funds in our budget, to have a dedicated staff person that's really going to work with the businesses, work with the property owners, and work with the city departments, LPD, on ways that we can be proactive instead of reactive in terms of solving some of the concerns that we have in downtown from, again, from just, we'll pick up trash on the sidewalk, you know, daily. We'll clean out the flowerpots and things like that. There are things that we can't do, that we really need to have that city support and city help when it comes to downtown officers at night and communication with our downtown officers. I've spoken with and had a meeting with incoming Chief Taylor, which was an excellent meeting, and he was generous with his time and listened to all my concerns. And then just some of the other things that are issues with us, for us downtown as property owners and business owners, is things like the public feedings that happen in Mon Park. We know that those folks are doing good work, and they are reaching out and trying to help those who are less fortunate, but the externalities that they cause for the businesses are real and ongoing. And so, again, no place to wash your hands before you have a meal, no place to use the facility, you know, have bathroom facilities after a meal. It's, to me, it's undignified. For those folks to feel like, for those folks to have to go use an alley as their bathroom is, is undignified. I think we owe them at least a little bit more of a dignified way of being able to receive those services from the organizations that want to help. So we're not going to ask them to not do that, but we need to work as a city and with the Homeless Coalition and with the services that are already downtown on ways that we can redirect or find a better location and also coordination. Some days, folks are out there feeding in Mon Park three times on the same day before noon. That's a lot of food because they don't know that the other person or the other organization is coming. We had a situation where folks were fed and apparently whatever they were fed perhaps wasn't kept heated properly or was contaminated in some way, and we had people vomiting all over Mon Park. So these are the kinds of externalities that we would like for the folks that are doing this good work to understand that there are consequences when they leave. There's consequences in trash and other things that happen that the business owners have to clean up, and that's really not fair. So one of Ali's jobs is to help sort of keep an eye on when folks are coming, gather some contact information, see if they're willing to come to a public meeting so that we can really talk about how to best coordinate and let them continue their work, but do it in a way that is fair and equitable for the folks that they're trying to serve, as well as the downtown businesses who have to, you know, deal with the aftermath of those types of activities. And what else? I think that's pretty much it. I would be happy to stand for any questions. Oh, oh, I did have one more slide. I forgot. All of these great events are happening in downtown. Many of them are city events, so thank you for producing the Christmas Parade and Snow Fest and Selfies with Santa, but we just want to let everyone know, there's tons of fun things to do this holiday season in downtown. You can certainly go to the city's website, lakelandgov.net, but we also have them on our website, downtownlkld.com. So now I'm done.
Thank you, Julie. So for those of you that don't know, the LDDA is a fantastic partner with the city of Lakeland and helping with all of our merchants downtown and making sure that it's a safe, fun, and festive environment throughout all the holidays of the year, but also, you know, on a regular basis of really encouraging people to shop local, work local, and that helps us with other things going out, you know, around. It's a good ripple effect throughout the community where if people can stay local and that pulls people off I-4, and there are all these other consequences that result whenever we start getting in our cars and going elsewhere. And I think it's always, small business is a backbone of our community, so thank you for all you do. I'll open it up for questions. Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. Good to see you, Julie. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, sir.
It's always a pleasure to have you come down and enlighten us on what's going on. I have several questions. I go to the Farmers Market quite frequently.
Thank you.
It looks like it's expanded quite a bit. Is there more room? Are we going to go beyond Bay Street, or I guess?
It ends at Oak Street.
Oak Street, okay.
But we don't see it going past Oak Street for several reasons. One, there's about to be a big construction project up there, so that would be uncomfortable for the merchants who have to be adjacent to that construction project. We have not expanded it to date because the only entrances to the parking lot that exists right now are on Kentucky, so we would, we would not be able to utilize that parking lot if we closed it down and put additional farmers, Farmers Market vendors. But even in the future, if, once it's built, it certainly could be expanded if that's what, there's going to be residential on that side, so we're sensitive to that. We try hard not to wake up our no-bay neighbors who are in the footprint of the Farmers Market with our clanging and slamming of doors and things like that very early in the morning. Vendors get down there about 6:00 AM to set up.
What, what does it cost for one of those bays?
What does it cost to be a Farmers Market vendor? That's a loaded question. There's, there's levels.
Okay.
But the gist, the gist is about 30 bucks a week if you, if you average it out.
How are we doing? What's, tell me about the parklets. How are we doing on the parklets?
The parklets are amazing. They, they survive the hurricanes, so we did not have to dismantle and take those, take those down. The businesses are reporting that people are very much enjoying sitting in them. Obviously, in the summer months, they were pretty sparsely used. It's pretty hot, but they are enjoying them. They're, they're, it's helping to take, for example, it's helping Harry's get off of a weight sooner, obviously, because of the additional seating. So yeah, they've definitely been a success. We've had other folks inquire about having them, but again, that was a sort of a one-time pilot project for us, and if we do work with the city to expand sidewalks in areas where there's a parklet against the park, for example, where Harry's is, we could use that park, we could dismantle it and relocate it for another business, so it's not something that's a one-use.
That was, that was my question, if there had been more requests to do additional parklets. So I assume there's kind of maybe.
There's a what?
Request for more parklet areas?
There, there's a request, but you know, the criteria we use for parklets was that we really wanted, that the restaurant had to be a full-service restaurant where they managed, you know, and sat, sat there, their customers had to have, you know, lunch and dinner service. So, you know, there's not, there, and particularly, we'd like to see the volume of Frescos and Harry's. And originally, 1961, before we expanded the sidewalk there, they were eligible for a parklet, but the, the volume, you know, to justify that expense to make sure that they're, they'll be utilized is one of the criteria.
I haven't had the chance or had the opportunity, haven't taken the chance yet to read or to ride the Squeeze. Is there a cost to that, and where would you catch it, per se?
The Squeeze is free. There's, I think they're installing permanent signage now. They've been using the A-frames throughout the, so far, because they were trying to figure out where are the best places to stop the Squeeze for folks to load and unload. So they use the A-frames just to, and they only set them out when they're actually in service. So once the permanent signage goes up, I think folks will probably start seeing that and wonder, oh, what's, you know, what is the Squeeze? And they'll be able to QR code probably information about that. But where, in terms of downtown, you can catch it at the corner of Tennessee and Lemon, at the corner of Kentucky and Lemon, and then it goes up Massachusetts to the joinery, and then it also comes over to RP Funding Center and the hotels there. And I'm, they, they've reported that, you know, the hotels are like on a wait to ride the Squeeze.
Yeah, there's a queue.
Yeah, there's a queue. Yeah. So it's, they're very successful at getting the folks in the hotels into downtown rather than in their cars and maybe, you know, going to some of the non-local places.
One last question. Do y'all have excess in your budget? Do y'all spend it, spend everything you get every year? Do y'all have excess?
I think we always have a little, I mean, depending on what the line item is, we've, in our grants budget, we've had some excesses over the years where we allocate a certain amount for some of our grants, and then they, they weren't used. But for the most part, I mean, we budget to zero. We don't budget to spend any of our surpluses, but yeah, we budget to zero, but we, we do typically have a little bit of extra left over each, each year.
Thank you.
And really quick on the Squeeze, the merchants have enjoyed having that, haven't they? I mean, it seems like it's been a good partnership with Citrus Connection so far for downtown and...
Oh, yeah, definitely. I think, I think the only concern is that they'd love to see it come more centrally located, maybe further, and at least a stop on the north side of the railroad tracks, but that's problematic because of the railroad tracks. So I know that Citrus Connection does an amazing job at figuring out routes. They have, they have methods to the madness, so I don't want to second-guess them, but it'd be great if we had something that sort of went a little bit further north at some point.
Probably a DOT discussion. Commissioner Madden.
Thank you so much, Julie. So I have four questions and then just to come. So my comment is just thank you for commissioning artists. I always like to thank anytime artists get a chance to show what they can do with the holiday window painting and get a little extra money. Thank you for doing that. The questions, number one is, and I'll just say them all and then you can comment. Is that the best? Okay. You mentioned that the master plan with Public Works and you had kind of CRA in parentheses. Since CRA is working with LEDC kind of on the master planning downtown, has LDDA been a part of that process to be able to really advocate on behalf of extending the sidewalks? And, you know, everyone knows I'd like to just shut the streets down, so I can't really get a lot of traction yet, but we'll, we'll just keep working on that. But certainly going to brick or extending the sidewalks, anything that makes it more pedestrian-centric is a priority to me, so I wanted to, A, see if you thought, because I think they're going to be unveiling that next week or sometime soon, the LEDC CRA master planning. So I was just curious if that would, we'd kind of see a little bit of that in that, number one. And then the second one is on Main Street Garage being open to the public. So certainly, how do I make the motion to open Main Street to the public? So is that a question for our city management or our city attorney? But, you know, I absolutely want to see that as a priority, that our public and our customers and shoppers, to support our retail businesses, especially during Christmas, to not have access to Main Street Garage now that we have Heritage Garage. And then I know we'll soon have Oak Street, an anchor on the north, that we can place employees and businesses who are going to be working from eight to five elsewhere so that our customers and visitors, those quarter of a million people who are coming down here, so they can have some predictability in parking. So how could I make the motion to open up the Main Street Garage? And then that was two. Number three is, it seems like typically you have to get a permit to go downtown and have a crowd gather. So I'm curious why there's not a permit process for crowds gathering to feed the homeless, like everyone else has to fill out a permit. And then I think that that would help solve some of the situations that you said were ancillary consequences to the goodwill that folks are doing. That's number three, permits. And then four is certainly, you know, it looks like Mon Park is becoming a useful flex space, flex space and lawn for our events. It kind of keeps us nimble, and that obviously costs no money, so with no money allocated, it's probably, you know, the best use right now. But I didn't know if we were any closer on any visioning or had any kind of wish list for Mon Park, like we've had discussions in the past. So those were my four questions.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be as brief as possible. In terms of the CRA and the LEDC's Catalyst 2.0 plan, and I don't think that they are getting down into that granular, it's much more of a development tool rather than the use of the sidewalks, but I'm in, you know, I've met with them. We're, we're talking and certainly providing input on, on the development side as well, but we really haven't talked about them sort of redeveloping the street scape as part of that vision package. So again, we haven't talked with Public Works, and we haven't, I don't want to just, you know, say, here, this is what we want. We want to, we want to sit down with the, the folks who do that. There's a lot of things to consider, ADA concerns and things like that in terms of the sidewalk expansions and/or re-bricking. That's going to change the, the grade of the street, and how does that affect all of the, the ramps that have just been built for the, the corners, you know, where they meet the, the crosswalks. Invested a lot of dollars in fixing the crosswalks to make sure that they're ADA compliant, and any grade change in the street is going to sort of muck that up a little bit. And so in terms of parking in the Main Street Garage, I think it's, I mean, again, parking's very political, and that's why I kind of come to you guys. I think if the, if city staff knew that you guys fully supported opening up the Main Street Garage for public parking, even just during the holidays as a test to see how that would work in terms of the permit users and if there's any conflict, I think the staff on the ground really supports that idea, but sometimes if they make a decision and then it gets frowned upon in the community, then it's like, what the heck did you do that for? So if you guys are the cheerleaders for that, I think they'll be more comfortable in, in doing that. In terms of permits for the park, I agree. You know, I think if you put down a table, you're having an event, especially if you do it consistently on, you know, the same day of the week, the same time of the day. If you're feeding folks, I think you should be required to offer bathroom facilities, whether you partner with a business that's willing to let you do that, and that's in the, in the contract with the city, or you rent a porta potty. But I think if you're bringing a crowd of people on a regular basis to any public location, then you're basically having an event, especially if you're talking about it on Facebook and things like that. So I think the concern is that it could be challenged, and certainly, Mr. Davis and I have had many, many conversations. And so you have to be sensitive about what can be challenged and what can't. But that's why I don't think it needs to be, I don't think we start with enforcement measures. I think, I don't think we've ever sat down and had a conversation with these folks. So I think the first step is to have a community meeting and have some conversations. And if there's resistance, like we're going to do what we want to do, and we don't care about the externalities, then you have to at least give them that opportunity to say, I didn't realize this was happening. How can I, you know, work towards making those less impactful? But we have to give them the opportunity and not just come down with a heavy hammer and say, we're going to enforce, enforce, enforce. So that's my thoughts about it. And, you know, again, we're going to spearhead those conversations. We're going to try, now that I have a dedicated staff person who's focused on clean and safe-type issues, we're going to attempt to do that. If they're willing to talk with us, then we'll sit down and have those community conversations. But if they're not, then we can also point that out. Like, we've tried, and these folks have no interest in working with us. And so hopefully, that's not the case. And then the last question about Munt Park. I know the city manager is working with Parks and Rec, and they have a lot of ideas that they're working on. And so I don't want to come in and not work alongside them. We have, we're kept in the loop about what they're talking about. And so when he's ready to sort of, you know, open that up to the public and get public input, I'll leave it to the city manager and the Parks and Rec Department to sort of take the lead on that. The ideas that we, you know, gathered, oh, sorry, that we gathered from the community, a lot of them were ideas that were really focused on what to do with the center. And I think the city manager's vision is less about the center and just the totality of the use of Munt Park. So, and that's a good thing to do, just how do we make it where we can still have events, because events are important, but also make it a more usable space when there aren't events, so that people want to come and linger? And especially with Bonnet Springs, you know, we're going to try to attract people that are coming specifically for Bonnet Springs to downtown. So what can we do in Munt Park to kind of help them linger a little bit longer? Thank you.
Commissioner Simmons, do you have that?
Okay.
Well, thank you, Julie. One thing I just wanted, FYI, for people's information, is the Squeeze last month in October did 1,800 rides. So that was the best month ever. So we're really excited from a Citrus Connection standpoint about that. So thank you for coming in and sharing, and we hope you have a great holiday season, and lots of people go downtown to shop and eat and have a good time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, now we'll move into the rest of our agenda. We have no proclamations today, no committee reports, but we do have two items for approval on our consent agenda. They are designated by the asterisk. One is the city commission meeting minutes from 11:04 to 11:07, and our utility committee meeting minutes.
Move to approve?
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor to approve consent? Aye?
Public comment?
Oh, sorry, public comment. Thank you, Kelly. On our minutes, our consent agenda items, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you for that reminder, Kelly. I appreciate it. There are no requests to appear from the general public currently or equalization hearings, so then we'll open this up for number three, public hearings, and our city attorney.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have two ordinances for second reading and consideration of adoption this morning. The first is proposed ordinance number 22-050, an ordinance relating to local government comprehensive planning, making findings, providing for small-scale amendment number LUS 22-06 to a certain portion of the future land use map of the Lakeland Comprehensive Plan, our community 2030, changing the future land use designation on approximately 2.63 acres located at 1,005 East Memorial Boulevard from public buildings, grounds, and institutional uses, PI, the Community Activity Center, CAC, provided for severability, provided an effective date.
Move to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Second. And a second, any discussion from commissioners? We've had several discussions about this in the first reading and in the second reading in our agenda studies and here. Any comments from the public on this specific item?
Good morning, commissioners.
This is the second DCA property. This is what?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Bart Allen, Land Use Attorney at Peterson &amp; Myers, 225 East Lemon Street, here today on behalf of the applicant, Sage Lane Development 1 LLC. Just wanted to introduce Mr. Clint Wallace. He's in the audience with us today, and just wanted to take a moment to thank your staff and thank you all for your time this morning. If you have any questions of us, we're here. Otherwise, we would request a favorable vote on the land use change and the zoning change that comes after. Thank you.
Any questions for commission, for the applicant? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call vote. Thank you again, Kelly. Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
All right, next is proposed ordinance number 22-051, an ordinance relating to zoning, making findings, providing for a change in zoning from O2 limited-impact office to C4 Community Center Commercial on approximately 2.63 acres located at 1,005 East Memorial Boulevard, providing conditions, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, provided for severability, provided an effective date.
Move to approve?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have a staff presentation first, or?
For the record, Chuck Barnby with the Community and Economic Development Department. We really don't have a presentation other than what was discussed at the agenda study session. The intent is to change the zoning to C4, which is more of a kind of a mid-scale commercial zoning on the property, just recorded with appeal property on Memorial Boulevard. For some reason, the laptop is not.
It's not laptop, it's desktop.
There we go. Definitely user, there we go. So again, this complements the land use change that was just approved by the commission. The C4 zoning is very much in line with what exists to the west and to the north of the project site. We have some photos of the property and the surrounding areas. And so with this being straight zoning, there are no conditions, as you would find with the planning and development, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Reed?
Tell me again why you recommend C4 versus C2?
C2 is more of a highway commercial type zoning category, which you would find up and down the Memorial Boulevard corridor. And so C4 really eliminates some of the more concerning highway commercial-type uses and creates more of a node consistent with what we would have to the west at Town Center and on the north side of Memorial on the former Lakeland Mall property. So really, what we want to do is work out a palette of commercial uses that created a center as opposed to a strip commercial up and down as it exists throughout most of the Memorial Boulevard corridor.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commission? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
We have one ordinance for first reading this morning that also requires a public hearing, but no action will be required of the city commission this morning. This ordinance will come back for a second reading and public hearing and consideration of adoption on December 5th. That is proposed ordinance number 22-049, an ordinance relating to local government comprehensive planning, making findings, providing for large-scale amendment number LUL 22-002 to the future land use map of the City of Lakeland Comprehensive Plan, to change approximately 19.02 acres of residential medium RM to residential low RL, and approximately 59.22 acres of residential medium RM to residential high RH, on land generally located north of I-4, south of Heatherpoint Drive, and east of Carper's Way, provided for severability, provided an effective date. Again, this requires a public hearing this morning, but no action on the part of the city commission.
Will you remind the public, too, that all the comments that are made during the first reading, or do they go into the record, or is that just the second reading?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Yes, they do. And there's an opportunity to make your public comments this morning, but there will also be an opportunity to make those comments on December 5th when this is scheduled for consideration of adoption.
Thank you, Palmer. Chuck?
All right, well, good morning. For the record, Chuck Barnby with the Community and Economic Development Department. Today's discussion will focus certainly on the land use, but there is a zoning component which will also be acted upon by the city commission on December 5th. The subject property in question is the former Woodswood Golf Course property, generally located between north of Interstate 4 between US 98 and Circumloop Road. Got a map showing the zoom in of the project area. The current entitlements on the property is, as they exist today, approximately 32.6% of the golf course property, or 41.93 acres, has a residential low land use category assigned to it, which allows up to five units per acre. 78.24 acres, or just under 61%, has a residential medium zoning category, or land use category assigned to it, which allows up to 12 units per acre. And then 6.5% has a residential high land use category, which allows up to 75 units per acre. Of course, those maximum densities are based on the actual site characteristics, which could limit the actual build-out levels under normal development conditions. On the zoning side, the planning unit development zoning ordinance as it exists today allows for a golf clubhouse and associated facilities. And so while the land use does allow for some fairly intensive residential uses, the zoning or the PUD allows a golf course that exists today. Just very briefly, the original application from the applicant earlier this year requested almost 1,400 dwelling units, 16 single-family, 204-town home, 1,020 multifamily, and 150 assisted-living facility units throughout the subject property area. In September, a revised request was provided to staff and was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board, which reduced the number of total units down to 1,208, again, 60 single-family and 1,148 multifamily units. Following Planning and Zoning Board discussion and public comment at the September Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and in October, the applicant provided a revised land use program, which reduced the number of units down to 994 units, 60 single-family detached, 60 single-family attached, and 874 multifamily units within the development site. So again, a continued reduction in the number of units and the density for the overall development. And again, and this is more tied to the zoning side of the ledger, but these are the major changes that were provided by the applicant between September and October of this year. There was conversion of multifamily units in Track 8, which is on the west side of the development site, to townhome developments, and a substantial reduction in the number of units there, again, kind of bringing the densities down. There was a reduction in the number of three-story buildings in Track 10, which is in that area of Fairfield and Sand Wedge Villas, north of Carper's Way, to two-story, to again, improve the compatibility with the surrounding single-family attached and single-family detached homes in that area. There were a reduction of buildings and number of units in Tracks 2D, 2E, 2F, from four-story to three-story buildings, again, to be more compatible with the adjacent Audubon Oaks multifamily community. And again, a reduction of overall units from 1,208 down to 994. So in terms of where we saw the greatest changes between September and October, again, we were looking at the areas around Track 8, multifamily to townhomes. And we started to see the building height and the overall number of units reduced in Tracks 10 and 11, closer to Carper's Way. And then Track 2, there were some modifications to the site layout plan to better align with Audubon Oaks' request for building changes and site changes to continue to take advantage of the views and to limit the impact on the existing residents that, you know, today are looking at a golf course. The land use changes, the current request is to change approximately 19.02 acres from residential medium to residential low. And then the remainder of the request, 59.22 acres, is from residential medium to residential high, and that includes Tracks 10, 11, 4, 2, and 3, generally north of Carper's Way to the northwest of Interstate 4. So those are shown on the map. No change is requested south of Carper's Way, including Tracks 8, 9, 7, 6, and 5. Again, this is a zoom in of Track 1, which abuts the Heatherpoint neighborhood. And the proposed lot layout at this point that would be addressed as part of the planning unit development zoning action, generally, the number of units or lots here are 14, 90 foot wide, and the intent was is to make them as compatible as possible with the existing lot sizes in the Heatherpoint neighborhood to the north. Track 2 is really kind of nestled within Audubon Oaks, or Audubon Oaks surrounds this development tract. The intent here would be go from residential medium to residential high. And so again, this was the plan that was presented in September, the plan as it exists today, which takes advantage of some sightline improvements. The buildings were oriented in to more of a north-south direction to minimize the impacts on the existing Audubon Oaks residents. So you can see some line of sight improvements here, again, directly reflecting comments provided by the developer. Track 3, which immediately abuts the newly opened Lakeland Park Drive extension, part of the request would go from residential medium to residential high. And the unit count remains at 154 for this area. And then Tracks 10, 11, and 4, the request would go from residential medium to residential high. It's important to note here that, and this is something where the zoning does play a role from a transportation standpoint, is that the current land use allowances would generate approximately 8,095 daily trips. The PUD, the zoning document, would cap the trips at 5,694, based on the allowed land uses per the planning and development zoning ordinance. The PM peak would be reduced from 624 down to 465. So again, the allowed land use generates a significant amount of traffic, more than what would be restricted through the planning unit development, should both the land use and zoning changes be approved by the city commission. And so that finishes up my presentation on the land use component of the request. The applicant is also here to answer specific questions, should you all have any, or depending on the questions that are raised by the public today.
Commissions from, commissions, questions from commission? I know we had a very robust discussion on Friday with a fuller commission that was here, but Commissioner Reed, you had some questions, I think you want to follow up?
Thank you, Chuck. That was quite thorough. I have a better grasp of what's going on today than I did on Friday, obviously. And Stephanie brought up a point at our meeting Friday. What is the maximum height that somebody could build on residential medium?
Residential medium, it really depends on the context area. I think in this area, you're still looking at four stories.
44 feet, something like that?
Something in that range. For residential, we base it on stories and not necessarily building height. It's based on stories.
And what about residential high, go 65 feet?
It really depends on the context. In this area, you're still, because it's more of a suburban context, you're still looking at the four stories, the likely maximum we'd be looking at.
So four is about the max, no matter what?
Correct.
Okay. Can you give us an actual number Monday for the both of those, please?
We certainly can.
I mean, next meeting, whatever. Yeah, Monday, today, whatever.
Commissioner Madden?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Chuck. So perfect segue into my kind of comment and question. So I love when we have, you know, residents and developers and our city staff working together. I think it's absolutely, you know, paramount important. I think it's absolutely, you know, paramount importance going forward, because, you know, there's only a finite number of acres that can still be developed within the city limits, and we need to work, you know, the best we can to make sure that that is as beautiful and as well-functioning, you know, as we can, mitigating things like traffic and all of the things. Just like we are able to look at this and see how the trips generated are modified based on concessions that the developer may make with number of units or heights of buildings, I know we also have things like tree ordinances, and then you project an idea of landscape buffer or distance, or even the visual line of sight that you showed based on height of buildings. To me, as we are quickly losing green space, you know, in the city of Lakeland, and certainly people, when they buy a piece of property, we want them to be able to develop it, but there's already things in our code that are important to us, like landscape buffers. There's already things like, you know, you cannot fight against, there needs to be a certain amount of wetlands, and if you're not going to use it on your land, they'll be somewhere else, you have to buy the credits. So to me, what I feel like is missing a little bit, because maybe we haven't had the need for it, is to look at a development with regard to green space and how much more important when it was a golf course. And so to me, it's, I see that we've done a lot of work on the height of the building with regard to sightlines, but the sight that will be eliminated is green space from the golf course. And so when I'm looking at these pictures, it's difficult for me to assess, does this now look like a surface lot and buildings and no green space? You know, so to me, it's, I would really like to, when I'm making these kind of decisions, I'm not as, I'm glad we're talking about number of units, because that's parking, right? And I'm glad we're talking about all the things that we're discussing, because we're mitigating all of those things. But to me, what I can't see, and I, you know, visually, is how this looks as far as the green space they had and what will be left at the end of the day after the development. That's why on Friday I brought up the height situation, because if height was a factor, not just for line of sight like we do with regard to density and how it fits in context with surrounding homes, but if I live on that golf course, and I know they're going to put a multifamily 20 stories way over by the Mercedes-Benz, you know, I-4, kind of, you know, going that direction, but I retain more green space and they can have, you know, more units than they had in three-story buildings, you know, that might be something that was, you know, I would love and long for. I'm not trying to change this development, I'm just trying to put that in the ear of our city staff and, you know, for us to think about at large, that just like we mitigate traffic and we have to have a certain number of parking spaces to make everything work and function appropriately, I'm worried at the end of the day that we shrink the building height, and that spreads out on more grass, and then the parking is spread out onto more grass. And at the end of the day, you have the numbers right, the traffic right, and everything looks right, and yet you think, oh, my gosh, why does it just look like buildings and parking? So I'm saying all of this prior to the second reading, to say I'm hopeful that somehow in our imagery, we can see a little bit of the landscape buffer or a little bit of where green spaces will be preserved at the end of the day, and hopefully, just remind residents too, you know, I know that they are, that gets in their mind. I don't want, you know, too tall of buildings, but if the taller, if the buildings were taller and it allowed me to have more of that green space and nature and things that I also had appreciated, then that might be a different consideration.
Well, thank you very much. And kind of stepping back, you know, this is definitely a substantial change to the golf course property as it exists today, and we definitely understand that there's a change for the residents out there from, you know, the views of what they're used to, you know, living on a golf course and being around a golf course for, you know, for a couple of decades now. The development program is a change to that, to that condition. And that's where, you know, in terms of, you know, listening to the residents, you know, working with the applicant, given that this is not a central city location, and ultimately, you know, the building, you know, the building heights, the building bulk in the developed area are going to be driven by number of units, by allowed parking, and ultimately, what is going to make financial sense for the applicant to be able to invest back into the landscape buffers and the infrastructure necessary to make the project financially successful? So, you know, working for a better part of, you know, of a year on this, you know, staff believes that we've really reached a good balance, you know. Ultimately, there are going to be concerns about the number of, the number of units and the overall densities, you know, a lot on the development site, but we believe as staff that, you know, given the cost to develop the buffers, to redevelop the, you know, the existing car paths into functional bike trail facilities to provide that connectivity with the residential and between the residential and the retail to the east and to the west, that really the plan that's presented now is something that we believe is most compatible, you know, certainly the most in keeping with the surrounding homes, and ultimately builds kind of quality into the design and into the site, so that it blends in as best as possible with the surrounding neighborhoods. So it has been a very long kind of back and forth, and we very much appreciate the comments that we've received from the public. They've been very targeted and very detailed comments, and we also appreciate the concessions and the revisions made by the applicant to get us to where we are today. I'll turn it over and, you know, kind of let the applicant's team, you know, give them an opportunity to provide some comments from their perspective as well, because certainly they've, they're the ones that develop the exhibits that are included in the PUD, not the land use, but in the PUD side of this, that show the buffers and show how it relates to the surrounding neighborhoods.
Before you do that, Commissioner Simmons, do you have anything for Mr. Barnby? And I have two questions for you, Chuck. What was the vote from P&amp;Z?
Vote from P&amp;Z was 5-1.
Okay. And then the other one, just to Commissioner Madden's point, before you leave the podium, I think in the future it'd be very handy to, and maybe communications can help with this, but when we're talking about traffic patterns and numbers, if there's any kind of visual that would be, other than numbers on a spreadsheet, of what 600 trips looks like. And so something really creative, maybe there's something that we can take video from intersections or from somewhere around town that we already have, so we can see what a traffic count really looks like. Because I think, and I've said this before in other presentations from Community Economic Development, is that for us to look at it in one dimension on a piece of paper, and that's why I asked for Google Satellite Maps, and you guys have been incorporating that, which is really helpful for me, you know, any kind of visual view of this, because I think that's one of the things for the public to see as well, is what that impact really looks like, not necessarily in real time, but an example of that. So that's just for future reference, but I wanted, well, it was fresh in my mind before we moved on to the next section with Mr. Allen. I just wanted to put that in your, that be in your bonnet.
Appreciate that, because it is difficult to kind of condense traffic down into something that is visual.
Good morning. While we're switching over to our presentation, I'll just kind of start doing some introductions. Thanks, Chuck. Again, for the record, Art Allen, Land Use Attorney with the Peterson and Myers Law Firm, 225 East Lemon Street, Lakeland, Florida, here on behalf of the applicant, SJD Development, as well as a property owner, I might add, of the former Wedgewood Golf Course. Start working through this. All right, thank you, sir. That doesn't work. Is this one there? Keep talking, I'll figure it out. All right. We're going to make it work here. It's Monday morning, right, on a holiday week, so I know I woke up this morning and needed an extra cup of coffee, so apparently the computer does too. Just kind of to give a little bit of introduction again, I want to introduce my team with me. So this is our development team. Obviously, I just introduced myself, but also with us, we have Kim Lee Horn, Scott Minganay, who's been our land planner and been involved in this project from the very beginning, is with us this morning, you're going to hear from him. Mark Wilson, professional engineer, has been working on a number of the more engineering-related issues and those kinds of things. Also, we've had Kim Lee Horn doing traffic. James Taylor has been the lead of our traffic analysis, and we've done a lot of traffic work, a lot more traffic work than you would typically do in a case at this point. Unfortunately, it is a holiday week, James could not be here this morning. We do have Chris Hatton with the Kim Lee Horn Engineering Firm, he will be speaking on traffic issues as it relates to this project. We've had a number of other consultants, environmental, geotech, survey, they're not here, but we have been putting in all of the work, all of the due diligence that you would need for a project that, in all regards, is a significant project. This was the former Wedgewood Golf Course, it has a long history in this area, in this city, and that has not been looked over, glossed over by this development team. I give Jonathan Hall and John Hall, who are the principals behind the group, a lot of kudos for taking the history into account, and not only just the history of the site, but the history of the community. This project, and as you can see on the screen above, we started in January of this year. So we've been in this project, working on 11, almost 12 months now, on what does this site look like? How does the redevelopment of the former Wedgewood Golf Course? How does it move forward, respecting the surrounding citizens and the surrounding community and residents, but also becoming something that the city of Lakeland can be proud of as we move forward into a new phase for this area? So this, again, started in January of 2022 with some of the initial stakeholder engagement, where the halls and the development team met with the leadership of the HOAs in the community. That helps begin to develop what the vision document looked like for the site. There was an initial public meeting, community meeting, that John and Jonathan, you know, basically did on our own accord. We did that in May, right before our initial planning commission meeting. We mailed out mailers and we did the exact same notices that you would have done. We held that in advance of the P&amp;Z. We had our first planning and zoning meeting in May of 2022. Again, Mr. Barnby gave you a good history on what that site looked like at the time. It was 1,398 units with a mix of different types. After the planning and zoning, it was a well-attended, robust planning and zoning hearing. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of residents in attendance. Coming out of that, we knew we weren't coming immediately back through your process as it lays out. We went back, we met with staff, we took those comments to heart, and you're going to see some of those more refined comments on how we changed the site plan about where roads, where roads laid out, what kind of units were next to what kind of units, building heights, things of that nature. That was in June, met with your staff, revised it, continued those efforts into June and July, updated traffic. Traffic was a major issue, so we went back. There were, you know, comments about, well, when did you get traffic counts? What do the traffic counts comprised of? Is it really the PM or really the AM peak hour? What are those details? We went back, we analyzed all those issues to make sure that the counts and the analysis and the traffic study was based on the highest peak volumes on the road. So we've gone back, we've reevaluated those issues. Had a third meeting with the residents in August. Again, that was outside the confines of a public hearing, updated traffic counts, presented all that information to them. Came back in September with, to the planning and zoning, with our second planning and zoning hearing. Mr. Barnby's already kind of showed you the changes there, we'll highlight a few more as well, but biggest concern being unit counts and building heights and unit types surrounding particular unit types. That's where we started making major changes of the site plan to make sure that there's single-family next to single-family. That's not only single-family and use type next to each other that's similar. We went back and we looked at what are the PUD conditions on that particular site? What are the restrictive covenants for Heather Point? Let's mimic those in our PUD to not just ensure that the lot sizes are the same, let's make sure that the quality of development and the type of development is going to be similar in nature to what's existing on the ground today. Ultimately, did not get a vote at that second planning commission hearing. We tabled it after a fair amount of discussion, not as much as the first one, but a fair amount of discussion. We came back in October to your planning commission on a third public hearing. Again, refined the unit densities, the unit types, added back in some townhome products into Track 8, where we had previously had multifamily. Again, to create a project that has an overall compatible nature with surrounding development from a building scale, a building bulk, things of that. That was a major concern from the residents, that was a major concern from your planning commission as well, as it relates to building heights, proximity between a three-story and a two-story, or townhome and multifamily, things of that nature. And we spent a lot of time working through those issues. At the end of the day, where we ended up is a project, when you look at it on the gross, on the entire site, we are at 8.6 dwelling units an acre, which is what we were hearing initially as, hey, develop something that's basically consistent with the surrounding land use and densities. Now, we've clustered some things, so, you know, we've pulled multifamily up along I-4, we've pushed larger lots, single-family next to Heather Point, we've created single-family within Holes 5, 6, and 7, and townhomes. So we've, we still have to have the land use changed, and that's what we're here for today, is a vote on the large-scale conference, a plan map amendment to go from residential low, or residential medium to residential low on 19 acres, and then to change it up from residential medium to residential high on 59 acres. Overall, this is a net reduction in intensity over the entirety of the site. It's reducing, and that's what Mr. Barnby's presentation concluded just a moment ago. It's a reduction in intensity. Yes, we are going up in one particular area, but that's to allow us to cluster and pull the intensity up along I-4 and away, away from single-family and things, and other type uses. So with that, make sure I've touched on everything. Some other things that you're going to kind of hear about are kind of in the amenities, you know, some things that, when we talk about creating these new developments, this new community within a community, we want to make sure that we are providing that open space, Commissioner Madden, that you talked about, and Mr. Minganay is going to show a little bit more detail than what was in the city's presentation, as it relates to open space, amenities, getting people active in the community, making sure that we're activating as much of the old golf course as we can to be a positive attribute in this area. But then, within the multifamily, within these amenity centers that are going to, you know, the clubhouses and the pools and things like that, that will go into these multifamily, you'll have business centers and different types of workspaces within those amenities so that you can accommodate and highlight and emphasize the work-from-home type aspects, right? You know, you've got a lot of people who are now, you know, not going to work, or not going to the office to work. Now they have spaces within these clubhouses, that's kind of the new evolution to these developments. So that's all baked into this as well. So there's been a lot of thought and a lot of effort that has gone into this development. So with that, I'm going to ask Scott to come up and let him start going through his piece of the presentation.
I'm going to sit here as a little advance now. And then, you still have that? Yes. Yeah, I know. Again, thank you for your indulgence on that Monday morning, again, Scott Minganay, Kim Lee Horn, 189 South Orange, Orlando, Florida. I've been working on this project through its inception, there's consistency of our team, and so hopefully, Mr. Barnby did a great job of kind of giving you some details on where we've been and some of the changes, and I did want to take some opportunity to highlight a little bit more in detail, and then Commissioner Madden, I'll try to focus in on some of those components you talk about, open space, and show how that's woven into the site. I don't want to step back too far, but I do want to give everybody a little bit of an understanding of where we've been, and I'll try to flip through these real quickly. And we started with the site context. Obviously, there is a big change from golf course to other things that are there, and so we tried to really evaluate, you know, the whole idea of Carpenter's Home context solution, and that's why we went through a number of the stories and development to understand not only the character of the existing Audubon Oaks and three-story, the existing buildings for Carpenter's Home and some of the other buildings in that character, and say, well, really, there is potentially getting to four stories if you look at one side of those, and the height and the scale is all part of that, that we tried to design towards that in context. Mr. Barnby has already gone over the zoning, the existing PUD, what's allowed, what needs to be changed by use, and it looks like we're off the And it looks like we're off the screen just a little bit. Matt, so I'll keep going through, and if there's any data that's just off the screen. Can you draw that up, or just make it fullscreen?
I had to address this a little bit more.
Oh, okay. And again, just, Mr. Barnby's already talked about these elements here for future land use, what's existing and what is proposed. And he's already highlighted, we're really just talking about a few of those areas. You can see the existing is on the side, so you've got parcel one going, we're reducing, going from medium today to what we're proposing down to low. And then, in all of these areas here, going to high through two, parcel three, four, ten, and eleven. And then remaining, everything on the south side of Carpenter's Way will be consistent with what it is today. It works. And again, I just wanted to highlight, Mr. Barnby kind of highlighted some of the elements. And this is, if you looked at the potential development intensity based on existing and proposed, so we've run the numbers on each of the side based on the square footage or the acreage in each of the parcels. If we did the math, you'd get close to sixteen sixty-seven units, or you'd be sixteen sixty-seven allowable under the current future land use. And we are capping our development at nine ninety-four. So overall, it's well over six hundred units, seventy-three units, that we are reducing it based on what's allowable today. Now, we realize we need zoning, we need a use change. But again, we are capping the intensity and density of the development from what it is allowable today. And we did an extensive study, again, talking about compatibility, adjacency, of what the dwelling units per acre in adjacent areas. Not only do we have four and six-story units there toward kind of our northwest approved at densities higher, twenty point three-six to what we're proposing overall, immediately adjacent to our site. We're in about the ten, and moving upwards on our adjacencies to our east and eleven. And so we looked at this extensively to see how our development would constantly be compared in the overall, as well as site-specifically, parcel-specific, in each of those areas as well. So again, Mr. Barnby talked about the May changes. I won't go through in detail how we came back in August. Again, reduced those quantities in the twelve-hundred-and-so range, and then in October, we're at nine ninety-four. And I'll go through a little bit of a side-by-side comparison, not, try not to bore you, but I want to talk about how the changes related to open space, to design, to circulation, to community-wide benefits that we are weaving into the master plan as a whole. And the reason I state that is because it's, we're not all developers, but I trust a lot of our developers, and we, our firm, is doing a ton of multifamily. And the first thing they ask us is, well, what's our comps? What's our comparables? How are we going to lease that? And a lot of it comes back to the amenity and open space elements. It's the sales and leasing windows. When I take you through, I see the clubhouse, I see the pool, I see the open space and amenities. Now, some people may never use the gym, but it's what sells the product. And we want that to be activated, but that density or those quantities, those unit counts, drive the investment into the open space. And so it's key that we've taken it down to nine ninety-four, and just the, you know, the market analysis says we need those units so that we can invest in open space. And so we'll show you where some of those investments are being made for not only these residents, but for Wedgewood community as a whole. And one of those big elements is to take the existing golf cart path, reinvent it, but weave it throughout the entire community so that everybody can use that golf cart path, and it'll be a community asset for walking trails, open space, et cetera, that maybe they couldn't have been today. You may walk the golf course, but in reality, that was private property, but now we're opening that back up for community use. So I'll highlight a couple of those things. So I've got a series of slides that just talk about what was in September, what was in October, show you quickly those comparisons, and I'll try to whip through these fairly quickly. Parcel one, again, just went to a reduction here, like-for-like product. We certainly didn't change things there, but we did widen to make sure that those ninety-foot wide lots were all, they are consistent with the plan. And then parcel two, again, Mr. Barnby talked about the reorientation. See, originally, we had the buildings that were kind of parallel to the Audubon Oaks, but by reducing them from four-story to three-story allows to open up, we had some pasos or some open space, and that put the narrow end of the building adjacent to some of those buildings. So they were looking more down corridors, amenitized pasos or community features. And so all of those buildings were reduced. Parcels four, ten, and eleven is kind of a summary here of what we've got. Parcel three was no change during earlier. Originally, we did have townhomes all in this area, but based on community input, we heard that density was best pushed to the outer edges, down by I four, down by, you know, an area that was away from, you know, the existing Audubon Oaks or the existing two-story townhomes or condos or single family. So we took those and made those multifamily units to drive a little bit, to keep the numbers up, obviously, like we needed to, but then we reduced in parcel ten all to two-story. So it went from three-story to two-story. But the footprints, Commissioner Madden, you noticed it, those are still the same amount of footprints. However, I mean, I hate to even open this because the community was very adamant about height and scale. Our developer would love to do four-story and reduce, and take two of those buildings and go to one building, because that's the same density, but it is more open space. But this is what we've worked with through the neighbor. If we talk about efficiencies, a four-story actually is way more efficient than a two-story, but this is what the neighborhood was requesting. So this is the way that we've drawn it. So we're just, I'm just demonstrating the back and forth.
Thank you.
And that we had in dialogue with the neighbors. From a developer's standpoint, it's way more efficient. But these are commitments based on conversations that they've been having. Again, a side-by-side of five, six, and seven, from September to October, no changes. All sixty-foot wide lots trying to match what the existing lots were adjacent to each parcel. Parcel nine, again, no change. This is kind of open space areas right now that will have to be, have to come back if density changes. We'll have to come back and go through that process based on what happens in parcel nine. And then parcel eight was a big change as well. Earlier, we were at multifamily dwelling units here, and then we went to more of a townhome for-sale product in parcel eight. And there were some other changes that we agreed to on buffers that I'll highlight as well. And then just to show you kind of where the community assets are that we need to maintain to make sure that these investments are marketable to the community. We have clubhouses in kind of a parcel two for those units. In parcel three, we have a shared clubhouse in the base of one of the buildings, but it would still have pools and secondary open space areas. And then four, ten, eleven would have a larger clubhouse with an exterior pool. This would be a standalone facility to serve all of four, ten, and eleven in these areas. None of the townhomes or single-family homes would have any kind of main clubhouse. It would just be the ancillary open space around the ponds, walking trails, et cetera. Again, we went back and looked at our overall densities, what we had in May, to what we, how we significantly reduced it. We went to overall ten point four-five dwelling units, still within the residential medium, between twelve dwelling units per acre max. And we were well within it, but still, we continued to make some concessions through October. In the overall, as Mr. Allen said, we're at eight point six-three overall dwelling units per acre. We do have some higher densities focused in toward the center of the project and away from single family. And again, that's just to make sure that we have enough density to allow the investments into public improvements. And again, we analyzed kind of the adjacent community compatibility all throughout the process. This I chart is in your packet and can be provided. We don't need to walk through all of those elements. We also looked at consistency of what the single-family products may look like, what the, each product that may be. And these are just some pictures to give the community an idea of the character. Higher-end units, obviously, in parcel one would be similar, and hopefully in similar fashion, to those that are currently in Heather Point. And then smaller units down in parcels five, six, and seven. You can see that red dots indicate where they are on the site plan and how we would look to still be compatible with adjacent residents. And then the townhomes would only be in parcel eight there to the west side of the site, and these are generally what they would look like based on what we're using as a built product. This is a product that the developer has used before. They know the efficiencies, they know the product development, and these would be similar type of buildings. And then all the multifamily shown, most of these would be three-story. There are some four-story shown in this. And then just highlighting the fact of the intense and really nice amenities that go along with those type of product. This is the one of the areas that we looked at, and we have cross-sections of each of these roadways. So for all of the development, we developed a cross-section that looked about community character and style. So that, okay, if the road is there, do we also have room for good pedestrian sidewalks and possibly even multi-use trails? So we went through each of those roads, and we'll show you where those cross-sections occur. And then this exhibit on the right here of the orange lines is that pedestrian circulation character that we had talked about. So all of the golf course paths today, we are going to replace them. We basically looked, based on the phasing of the project. What we analyzed was where they crossed public access streets. One, for safety. If you had a golf cart crossing at some time, people will recognize that and go, sometimes there's a golf cart there. I probably need to slow down. Now, they haven't been there for a while, but what we did is we are crossing those multi-use trails at those same locations. So in and out of the public parcels, if there was anything that was going into a neighboring parcel, we said we want to leave that point in place. And then we wove it through our development pattern so that that can be an open space, can be a multi-use trail and access to the public. So for safety, we kept them generally where they were in the crossing the public streets, and then we changed them, but then they would be built and maintained as each development comes online. And that's a, that's a community investment, not only for, obviously, a sales component for this community, but also for the Wedgewood community existing as a whole. So here's what those cross-sections look like. And I think the character of this, and what we've shown is a three-story next to a four-story. To talk about volume, scale, pedestrian life, you know, on a street, and this main street element here you see is a purple highlight, you can see the A, cross-section A by the purple. And so that is really kind of our central core main street, going through the most of our density of our development. And even though that's where our density is focused, what we're trying to do is show the community character that is still being provided by a three-to-four story. We have a really wide twelve-foot multi-use path with landscaping on either side. So, you know, significant amount of room, ten to fifteen foot between the buildings, the landscape between the on-street parking, which allows for separation of the pedestrians to feel like they're not right next to the street, but they still have a little community character. And then still allow for a sidewalk on the opposite side of the street with some on-street parking. Again, it feels like you have separation, gets you a little bit of separation between the car and you're walking. You might have a stroller, you might be walking a dog, just gives you some of that separation. And then still significant amount of landscape between the four-story to bring that scale down. So that's the character that we've tried to define on all of the streets, as well as the dedicated pedestrian path. You saw that orange exhibit that talks about a multi-use trail that would go through the entire site, and it would be used for public as well as individual, the new development as well. Again, a ten-to-twelve-foot multi-use trail with landscaping on either side. We want to combine it so that it's a use. We want to make sure that it has certain eyes on that use for safety. But we also want to make sure it is connected so somebody can get on that without having to cross over multiple streets and feeling like they're always watching out, and it's a safe for kids as well as parents with strollers and other things. And then landscape buffering, it's cut off just a little bit, but there are some concessions beside what are defined. You've mentioned we do have to follow the Land Development Code, and those were defined, but we added some enhancements to some of those areas. So not only the cross-sections, we'll show you in just a second, but also we've added some fencing per the residents and per planning and zoning, our meetings with them. So around parcel eight, because this one felt like it was right in a tighter area, we have added to the buffer a six-foot vinyl privacy fence so that the developments are somewhat separated. And then around the parcels adjacent to Audubon Oaks, we have added a decorative fence, most likely a picket, aluminum picket fence decorative, that would wrap our development and create a little bit of separation between the two, but not being a privacy fence, but being more of just a security. Let's stay out of, let's make sure that these residents are using their pool and these residents are using this pool, just to create some definition. And we've added that to each of these cross-sections. And then we looked at them extensively. How could we add berms? How could we add potential low walls if required? Just to make sure that we're not only just doing it with landscape or shrub material, but possibly where we have the room to berm it up to add some added height for buffering and screening. And then all of the other types that we've outlined as well. So with that, I think I've hit on most of the elements that we talked about. If I go back through and you look at the master plan as a whole, there is an extensive amount of open space that maybe we could highlight a little bit better through the rendered master plans, as you can see. And again, our comps, our sales components are going to be driven a lot by, when people come to look at a first unit, they want to go through the sales and leasing area, they want to look at the clubhouse, they want to look at the pools, and they want to look where I can walk my dog or where I can walk. And so we think those elements of open space are very critical to making this a really profitable and successful project, not just profitable. Successful means good for everybody. We have residents, low turnover, et cetera. So with that, I'll hand it over to Christopher.
Scott. Good morning. My name is Christopher Hatton. I'm a registered professional traffic engineer with Kimley Horn and Associates. Sorry for my raspy voice here, but I'm here to focus on the transportation analysis. And certainly, there has been a lot of discussion about the traffic impacts. Certainly, Commissioner McClary, I know you've mentioned about some specifics about the numbers. There are actually a couple of slides in here which get into specific numbers, especially as they relate to Long Carpenter's Way, which I know has been kind of the highlight of this focus for the residents. Just to take one step back really to talk about the traffic impact study and what its purpose is. And it's obviously to look at the impacts of the potential comprehensive plan here and its impact on the roadway capacity. So we'll be getting into some specific numbers, but globally, that's what it is. Now, we've taken a little deeper dive based upon some of the requests from the residents to look at some of the future operational characteristics, specifically turn lanes and some of those details. They're important to look at whether or not there are some deficiencies even on the, along the roadways. The traffic impact study methodology was formed in accordance with the City Land Development Code and the Polk TPO methodology. We worked specifically with Chuck and his staff to get agreements on the study methodologies and assumptions. This was actually, the traffic counts were conducted after Lakeland Park Drive had been opened. And again, once we got back and forth with several comments from the city and their staff, we did address those and update the traffic study. Now, I will say one thing from the actual traffic, detailed traffic study, which I have here, like I said, which was thoroughly reviewed, and again, back and forth responses with the city. It was conducted for the land use plan that had the one thousand two hundred and four units. So now we are planning for the nine hundred and ninety-four. So again, this is about an eighteen, twenty percent reduction. So the numbers that we'll be showing here in the next few slides, again, are conservative. The traffic impact study conclusion showed that, as you heard from Chuck as well, the comprehensive plan will cumulatively reduce the number of trip generation potentials for the projects, for the properties in question. The study area roadway segments, and again, Carpenter's Way, I think, is the most important that has been evaluated, will operate within the adopted capacities, and we'll have some details on that in just a few slides. And again, no new intersection deficiencies were identified as part of this redevelopment. Some of the important items are certainly some of the improvements or infrastructures that are going to be developed. And I think one of the ones that's been talked about is the roundabout. And I think one of the ones that's been talked about is the roundabout and road realignment at Carpenter's Way and Wedgewood Estates. As Scott and others have talked about, I think the multi-use trail expansion and connectivity is critical. I've been doing transportation studies now for 32 years, and for many, many, many years, decades actually, have focused on the auto. The last, I would love to say, and looking into the future, that we'll be looking less and less about auto, but more importantly, about pedestrians, bicyclists, and that type of, an area where you can call a community home. And this multi-use trail expansion and the focus on that for safety and just the amenities that are being provided here are pretty overwhelming, and I'm very happy to be a part of this project. Included in that is actually a right-of-way dedication for the future southern extension of Lakewood Park Drive. We will be working, helping with some of the planning studies for that to help enhance that. In addition, talking about not only bicycle, pedestrian, but also transit, and that's coordinating with the Citrus Connector as it relates to a potential stop along Carpenter's Way. Contributions to the mass transit district budget as well as transportation impact fees, and of course, there's also some sewer and station upgrades and force-mate updates that will be a part of those projects. I want to go into it just for a few slides, some of the details that we did beyond kind of the high-level roadway analysis that we've done exterior to this project. I think certainly the residents wanted to focus on Carpenter's Way, and so we did that. We took a deep dive in that. What you see on the right is an actual volume count throughout a 24-hour period along Carpenter's Way that shows the peak times along Carpenter's Way, that basically the peak is from about 4:45 to 5:45. And it's important to notice that because, again, that's when we're looking at the capacities, when folks ultimately feel the most quote-unquote congestion. What we identified, that existing congestion right now or capacity, is at about a .71 volume-to-capacity ratio. That means about 71% of the 100%, if you end up to 100%, it would be basically at capacity. We're at about 71% of that right now on Carpenter's Way, but with a proposed redevelopment, that will increase to about .85, but still significantly below the 1.0 VC ratios, which is required. And then I know a lot of folks have heard over the years, the level of service, and the level of service is what you would experience along Carpenter's Way, and that's a level of service C, and that is acceptable. That's the city's standard. One of the other items I think that's important to look at is the number of intersections along Carpenter's Way from just north of Wedgewood down to Lakeland Park Drive. A lot of times, these are kind of conflict points or friction spots, and existing right now, there are eight of those along this Carpenter's Way. And I think it's important to note that as part of this redevelopment, we are not adding any new intersections or friction points. There will be, as part of the redevelopment, still eight of these points, and these are where generally folks will obviously be turning into the development and the like. So that is not being increased as part of this development. And here, Commissioner, is some of the details that I think that's important to look at. What this actually evaluates is our turning movements along Carpenter's Way into the actual side streets. And then these numbers that you're looking at, 23, 32, these are actually turning movement volumes during the PM peak hour. So if you think about that, that's about one every two minutes. So in terms of like that, if you look at that, 17, 12, and 45, that's a little less than one a minute during the PM peak hour. So if you're driving along, you'll see a vehicle, 60 seconds later, you'll see another vehicle. So I think it was important to kind of identify the actual volume that are coming in here, but of course, we had to look at these as it relates to the city of Lakeland Code in terms of potential turn lanes. And based upon these volumes, there are no new turn lanes that are required. Obviously, there are no existing turn lanes out there, and we know certainly the residents don't want to see a four-lane roadway with turn lanes. That's not what they're looking at, and fortunately, that is not what is being required here. And to take it one step further, again, at these intersections that, again, the friction points we looked at, we looked at actual delay times. And again, they are within acceptable level of service. It's actually acceptable. It's quite a low delay in terms of the amount of time that you would wait via vehicle that's turning left that would actually come off the main line into the side street. These would be, again, and in this case, probably less than 15 seconds that you would have to wait. And in summary, Carpenter's Way, again, that's important because I know a lot of the residents have focused on that, and certainly, we wanted to do this deep dive to that, is expected to operate at level of service C, which is acceptable for the city standards. The redevelopment, again, will not add any additional conflict points along Carpenter's Way. No turn lanes will be warranted at the proposed driveways and the left turn movements. The driveways will operate with that lower delay. And I am available for questions.
Any questions, Mr. Hatton, related to transportation or traffic?
Questions from the commissioner?
I'll ask them later.
Okay.
With that, that's really the end of our presentation as it relates to the project. I just kind of want to recap here and just, you know, we are here on a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment. We did spend a fair amount of time talking about the details of the site plan and the PUD. There are a litany of PUD conditions that, you know, really lock in a lot of what you saw here today as it relates to landscaping and buffering and all the different aspects of the development. So that's how it gets codified. We'll be voting on those hopefully at the next hearing. But at the end of the day, there's been a lot of thought and a lot of work that has gone into this thing, all the way back to January of 20, of this year. Those communications and those conversations between the developer, our team, residents, your team, hearings, community meetings have resulted in the project that you see here today. I think at the end of the day, this is a very well-thought-out project. It addresses the issues. It may consider some tweaking. Commissioner Madden, you heard Scott indicate, you know, we hear you on the building heights, and we hear you on the open space. The problem is, what we have promised the residents to do is kind of contradictory to that aspiration, and we appreciate that, and we would love to work with you on it, but we don't want to be put in a position of going back on a commitment that we made to a Wedgewood or a sand wedge on the tee about building heights and bulk and scale and things of that nature. But we have put together a plan that we believe meets all the criteria. It's consistent with your comprehensive plan. Your staff has indicated that. Our staff has, our team has agreed with that position. It's consistent and meets the land development code requirements to move forward, and we would request a favorable vote today on the large-scale comprehensive plan amendment from residential medium to residential low on 19 acres and from residential medium to residential high on 59 acres. Assuming a favorable vote today, and maybe some additional discussion, I promise we won't go through in as much detail the next time, every slide, but we will have them all here, and we will be prepared to address every issue either today or moving forward into the next hearing. So thank you very much for your time and your patience this morning, Mayor Protem, and we'll be ready for any questions or rebuttal from residents to the extent applicable.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Just for clarification, there is no action being taken today. I just want to clarify that. That would be at the next.
They don't vote on the transmittal?
It's because we're certified, local government, we're not required to transmit.
Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, comments or questions for anyone who's already made a presentation?
Do you want to hear them first, or do we want to talk? The main question I have is Christopher. I ride that street frequently, and if you'll put a map up on section number nine?
Which one?
Yeah, track now, I guess you'd call it?
Oh, track.
And when Chuck said for Friday, y'all were going to do some phasing in your development, it's going to be a phase, phase-in development per se.
Commissioner, this will not come out of the ground at one time. This will be a phased development? Yes, 100%.
Again, what, on number nine, where the roundabout is, I go that way frequently, and that's a blind curve. We almost had a wreck coming from the west going east. I need that, I think that roundabout should be in your first phase. From my perspective, you could put a lot of, there's going to be more traffic on that road just going to the retail area, and I think that roundabout needs to be in phase one personally, because I've, there were some cars in front of me, and there's cars coming from west going east that come around that curve real quick, and I just, we almost got hit. But you can easily deceive from west going east, but that little curve, they're coming around that real quick, and you maybe know that already, but I'd like to see that in phase one, if at all possible, that roundabout.
And we certainly understand that, and certainly, the safety aspect, roundabout and the like. So that's something I know certainly, we've talked about the team in terms of the timing and phasing for that. So that is certainly a safety aspect that we'd like to see get out early as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reed, just to kind of go a little bit further into that, there will be a developers' agreement that comes along as part of the conditions of approval with the PUD related to transportation, how transportation is implemented, how it is, you know, the dedication of Lakeland Park Drive. All those issues will be wrapped up into a developers' agreement that'll come back before this board at a later time as well. So we're aware of that, and we'll do what we can to address it.
Commissioner Madden, did you have comments, or you want to wait?
I'm fine. Okay. Commissioner Simmons? All right, so this is a public hearing that we're opening up for the public to make comment. You have five minutes each. If you'll state your name and come to the podium, when you come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we would hear public comment, our public hearing now. With specific regard to this project.
Yes. David Simpson's my name. I live at 1815 Westminster Court, which is outside the city, about three miles or so to Carpenter's Way. And I go on that road several times a week, and I think there's a traffic problem. There's a traffic problem right now, I believe. Let me give you an example. On 98, which is close to this development, there's a Dunkin' Donuts near the Walmart there that, it's a great store, but I've seen cars backed up on 98 going into the Dunkin' Donuts. There's another Dunkin' Donuts, not to change the subject, south of here, same thing. I've seen cars backed up on Florida just going into the driveway, the drive-through. That's a problem. It's a safety problem. If you consider the area around there, recently, there was a senior citizens' home already built in Carpenter's Way. The Sandpiper Golf Course, about a mile and a half away, they just built 50 new homes in their golf course. I think it's Galloway Road right next to the Walmart that's close to the development. They're currently building, I'm sure you folks know, 500 units or so. I don't know if that's in your city or not. I think there's a problem right now, as we speak, that should be addressed. Things to consider, garbage pickup. Again, I live outside the city. There's a garbage pickup problem in my area that you may be familiar with. Example, last week, my yard waste wasn't picked up. Called them on Friday, whatever, it still isn't picked up. It's a major garbage collection pickup problem in the area. It might not be the city of Lakeland, but it's around that area. So this development is going to create more garbage. Medical resources. I know that Lakeland Regional Hospital here is one of the largest in the state. Have we considered all the new people moving into this area? Is it going to, how is it going to affect the medical resources provided to the community? I-4, it's very close to this development, probably one of the most dangerous roads in the state of Florida. Have you considered entry and exit onto and away from I-4? Public parks. What impact is it going to have on public parks? I swim at Kelly Rec Center. I was going to go there this morning. I think I'm going to go there later today. I've noticed an increase, when I jump in, I swim lap lanes, and just this past year, I've noticed an increase in number of swimmers, and I sometimes have to wait 10 to 15 minutes just to jump in the pool. Great facility, but more people come to this area, you're going to need more public parks. Hurricane preparedness. I just worked 28 days with a monitoring company picking up hurricane debris in the area, mostly in the city of Lakeland. What preparedness have we done with this new community coming in? Traffic on 98. I mentioned I-4. 98 is another highway. I'm sure it's a, 98, I try to avoid that road if I can, but most of the time, I can't. Yesterday, I had coffee at Panera Bread, and I drove down to Kelly Rec Center. Yesterday was Sunday. I think I made it in about 15 minutes, record time. The lights were pretty much synchronized, going maybe 30, 35 miles an hour speed limit. If I were to do that road right now, probably take me 30 minutes, you know, in the afternoon, maybe 40 minutes to go that same distance. I'm originally from New York. I know all about traffic. I used to commute 20 miles a day on Long Island, and it would take me about an hour to go 20 miles a day, and I did that for five years. Do we want Lakeland to be another Brandon, Florida? Brandon is a nightmare. There's a road 60 in Brandon that reminds me of some streets on Long Island. That's all my comments.
Thank you, sir.
One last comment. I told you, I worked 28 days for the consulting firm monitoring hurricane debris pickup, and we worked the 28 days, we went from Lake Miriam Drive, which is near Lakeland Highland Middle School, all the way to Beacon Road by Hollingsworth, boarded by Florida Avenue and Cleveland Heights. And I've driven that way, I used to be a member of the YMCA. Beautiful neighborhood, and I encourage everybody, rather than drive through the neighborhoods, spend some time just walking around, checking out the neighborhood. I've had, I now have a different perspective on that area than I did when, actually, I rented, I lived on Cambridge Avenue for a while before I built a home in North Lakeland.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Other comments from the public? Just a reminder to state your name and address for the record, and you can adjust that mic up or down if it's necessary.
Thank you. Gina Ward. I've been a resident at 4037 Derby Drive for almost 20 years. It'll be 20 years on Thanksgiving Day. I wasn't prepared to speak today. I didn't know it would be an open forum, but there was a lot stated today that I'm speaking on behalf of homeowners that we just don't agree with. It's the density, it's the traffic. It doesn't matter if they're three stories, four stories, five stories. We cannot handle the traffic. I took a video Saturday outside of my pool enclosure, and there was literally a half hour of nonstop traffic on Carpenter's Way headed up to Lakeland Park Drive. I don't know what the cause was, but there was people doing U-turns on Carpenter's Way trying to get out of whatever was up ahead. There's snowbirds just now arriving. Traffic is gridlocked. We know that we're waiting on a traffic timing study at 98 at Carpenter's Way. It causes gridlock at corporate, that most people, maybe if there was a little exit turn lane where people could go either back to Wedgewood Estates Boulevard or take that right behind Aldi and then go up, they can get out on 98. But it is pure gridlock at any time of the day, whether it's a weekend or a weekday, and it's really been at any time of the day or weekday. So traffic is a huge concern of ours, and also, when the developer, or Mr. Allen, was speaking, he said that there, there's only 8.4, 8.64 dwellings per acre. Do you realize that 91 acres is non-developable because it's stormwater, it's planned activity centers, it's non, it could be the walking paths? All of that is not developable anyway, but they're using that number to substantiate that they've got low density, and that density is not low. They also stated that there would not be any new ingresses or egresses on Carpenter's Way, and there will, because they can't use the existing homeowners' association's driveway as to get people out of their new apartment complexes. So their new developments will add another four, which is going to put that at 11 ingresses and egresses at a half-mile stretch of Carpenter's Way. We can't get out now. And the other thing is Lake Gibson Village, which we thought was going to be a phase-two assisted living facility or senior development, is now just being proposed as a full, what would you call it? Any type of person can rent there. So it's not just senior living that would maybe lower the amount of traffic in and out, but that's, we're looking But that's, we're looking at now 1,314 new families moving into a three-quarter mile stretch of Carpenter's Way. We just can't handle it now. And there's only 884 homes that exist adjacent to the golf course now. You add another 1,314 homes, and we won't be able to leave our home. So I just, sorry, I wasn't prepared, but I wanted you to be aware. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other comments from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Patty, a resident of Wedgewood Community for 33 years. I want to bring some more numbers to your attention. Thank you, thank you. Not only is there going to be this development on the Wedgewood Community of 994 with S J D, 320 with L G V, which is Lake Gibson Villages. On 98 North, where Sears used to be, is going to go 276 three-story apartments. Across from Walmart on 98, or 98 North and Daughtry, behind Pinch and Penny is going 300 apartment buildings, only three stories. Behind Race Track on 98 North, by Macon Drive, is 278 units, only three story. Now, why is Wedgewood getting 15 four-story apartment buildings when it's a residential community? The rest of 98 is commercial. Our area is not residential. You bring these numbers of 1314 on Carpenter's Way on a three-quarter mile radius, and then add 98 North, you are talking 2,168 vehicles more on the road, depending too how many trips they're going to be making a day. Traffic is horrendous now on 98 North, also on Carpenter's Way. I waited nearly 10 minutes to pull out on Saturday because the traffic was so horrendous from Heather Point to Carpenter's Way. So please consider all this traffic that's going to be happening on 98 North and Carpenter's Way. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment? Seeing none.
All right. So this is the first of two required public hearings on the Comp Plan Amendment. This will come back for a second public hearing on December 5th, at which time both the applicant and public will be given another opportunity to comment on this. As you heard, the mayor pro tem mentioned this morning, when it was opened up for public comment, public comment's limited to five minutes per person. I don't know what kind of a crowd we're expecting on the 5th, but it would facilitate things if the public had a spokesperson. And this commission is typically given a spokesperson, basically the same amount of time as the applicant to make their presentation. And then just general members from the public will be given five minutes per person. So I would encourage you, if you do have a spokesperson, to go that route. Again, this will come back for a second public hearing, consideration of adoption on December 5th.
Thank you. And thanks to everyone who came out today and all the presentations. We appreciate it. All right, we'll move to item number four, the Community Redevelopment Agency. There is no report today. So that brings us to number five on our Agenda City Manager and our Deputy City Manager, Emily Klow.
Mayor Pro Tem. This is a recommendation from the, to the city's health plan, stop-loss reinsurance coverage with Voya. Voya is the city's current carrier for the city's health plan, stop-loss reinsurance coverage. The current contract is due for renewal on December 31st, 2022. The stop-loss reinsurance provides reimbursement to the city on any single healthcare, health claim that exceeds $435,000 during the calendar year. Voya has proposed a 7.3% increase to the current rate of $35.04 per member per month rate with an enrollment rate, or excuse me, with an enrollment of approximately 2,350 employees and retirees on the plan, which provides a lower annual premium of $1,060,320, because last year we had more members on the plan. It is recommended that the city commission authorize the appropriate city officials to renew the stop-loss coverage with Voya effective January 1st, 2023, with a per-member per-month premium of $37.60 for an approximate annual, total annual expense of $1,060,320. And we have Joyce Dias, our Risk Management Director, as well as representatives from Gallagher for any questions.
Any questions from the commission? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any questions or comments from Ms. Dias?
Dias.
Dias, sorry. Commissioner Madden? You're looking for Joyce.
Yes, I see Joyce.
Okay.
Did you want to?
Joyce, could you come up? Sorry. All that was code for, go ahead and come up to the podium.
Good morning. For the record, Joyce Dias, Risk Management and Purchasing Director.
Commissioner Madden?
So Joyce, I did have a question. I know that, you know, we have just had a lengthy presentation for the other thing that my mind is still reeling from. But it is always nice when you just give kind of a nutshell explanation for the public, since we've had the conversation on Friday.
Certainly. When we went, and I shouldn't say we, A.J. Gallagher, our broker, does the heavy lifting on this part. And when they went back to Voya for renewal for January 1, they came to us with a 14.75% increase. So I asked our broker to go back to them to renegotiate, as well as go out and market to others to see what kind of better rate we could get. So when they went out to market, the only one came back at 40% greater, which obviously wasn't anything we were interested in. And when Voya came back, they negotiated a little better for us at the 7.3%. So we're looking at a much lower rate than what we initially anticipated for that.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Reed?
Thank you. Emily, how many employees did we have the year prior to that?
Approximately 2,600 we're on. So keep in mind, we pay per member per month. So it, these are just, we're approximating because we pay actuals. So depending on how many, and I should just defer to Joyce. But we work so closely together. So it's per the employees and the retirees that are on the plan, then we pay for them. So the, in your table on the item, in 2022, there was approximately 2,600. And so that's why it was an increase in the rates, but a decrease in the approximate value, because there's less people per member per month.
And do we anticipate getting up to 2,600 again?
That would depend on the budget and hiring. As you know, hiring has been difficult. So we've lost quite a few people, which has reduced our numbers somewhat, yes.
But if more, I mean, we can't look into the crystal ball, but a bunch of people retired and chose to retain our insurance, and then we even hired their replacements, yes. That's possible.
It looks like we're going up every year. So we can anticipate in '25 and '24 that these numbers will probably be approaching $40 a person's at a fair statement?
I would hope not. Insurance market has been very difficult the last couple of years with the pandemic and the, now the economic conditions that we're under. So, you know, we can only hope that maybe some of that will stabilize and not continue to increase the way it has.
And keep in mind, excuse me, keep in mind that this is for single health claims that exceed $435,000. So the healthier that our members are, the less risk we are, which would reduce the rate. So just another reason to get our employees and retirees as healthy as possible.
Do we, I know on some plans, we give them benefits go to health facilities?
I'm not sure I understand.
Health clubs.
Gym memberships.
Oh, gym memberships. We have our facilities with Parks and Recreation that our employees are able to utilize. And under our wellness program, they get a reduced rate to be able to participate. Working on some programs where maybe that is a no cost to our employees.
And we advocate non-smoking and all the other things, I presume?
That's a bigger challenge, but yes, we do through our wellness programs.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, this is a voice vote. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Joyce.
Thank you.
All right. This moves us back to the city attorney on item number six for ordinances, first reading, A1.
Item number six is related to the presentation you heard on Wedgewood. This is the related zoning ordinance for that project. By Florida law, however, this is only a first reading without public comment. So I'll read the title and to the record, but no action or public comment is called for this morning. This is proposed ordinance number 22-053, an ordinance relating to zoning, making findings. Submitting ordinance 4773 is amended to provide for a major modification to plan unit development zoning to allow for the redevelopment of the former Wedgewood Golf Course for 874 multifamily dwelling units, 60 family, single-family attached dwelling units, and 60 single-family detached dwelling units on 127.89 acres, generally located north of I-4, south of Heather Point Drive, east and west of Carpenter's Way, and south of Wedgewood Estates Boulevard, providing conditions, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, providing for separability, providing an effective date. And again, that will come back for a public hearing with public comment and consideration of adoption on December 5th.
Thank you. We have no resolution, so we'll go to item numbers, or item C, number one.
Yes, we have two ordinances. These are not ordinances. These are the first of two agreements under a relatively new program instituted by the city, our Economic Development Infrastructure Incentive Program. This was originally endorsed by the city commission at its 2019 strategic planning retreat. And has subsequently been funded by the city commission in the annual budget. Lakeland Electric contributes $250,000 a year. Water, the Water Utilities Department contributes $200,000 per year. And another $50,000 is contributed towards this new program by the general fund. So approximately $500,000 per year is contributed into this. The purpose of the program is to provide assistance to larger manufacturing-type customers that end up, quite frankly, benefiting our utilities. They grow the tax base of the community, provide employment opportunities to the community. So the idea is to incentivize those types of projects. The program provides assistance with electric, water, and wastewater utility extensions, relocations, transportation infrastructure development. It also provides assistance with impact fee costs. To be eligible under this program requires a minimum capital investment of $10 million. There's also two other ways you can become eligible in the program. One is to provide, is to provide for the creation of a minimum of 25 new jobs that pay an average wage of 125% of the Polk County average annual wage, or to create a minimum of 50 new jobs that pay an average wage of 100% of the Polk County average annual wage. Both of the projects that you're going to hear about this morning are eligible under the program by virtue of providing at least a minimum capital investment of $10 million. The first project is with Fresna, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, USA Corp. They are an international manufacturer of high-quality cantona and shellfish. They're currently headquartered in Spain, and they plan to build out approximately 180,000 square foot facility at 900 Chestnut Road. That is just outside of the city's limits, but within the Lakeland Electric and Water Utility Service territories. They plan to create 110 new jobs at their new facility. 27 of those will pay at least 125% of Polk County's average annual wage. The annualized average wage for the new jobs will be $54,206. They plan to invest approximately $20 million in capital improvements, although we heard on Friday that it may end up being significantly more than that. Fresna has applied for $400,000 under the Economic Development Infrastructure Incentive Program. That's the maximum amount that would be available to any particular project under that program. They intend to use the funds for the purpose of offsetting water and wastewater impact fees that are due for the project. Under the agreement that is under consideration this morning, upon Fresna completing their project and providing evidence of a CO for the project, they would be awarded $400,000 under the program. That's recommended for your approval. We have Jason Willey, the city's Economic Development Coordinator in the audience, as well as representatives of the LEDC. If you have any questions.
Moved or approved?
Second. We have a motion, a second. We had a very, just for the public, a very thorough presentation and met with both companies on Friday at our agenda study. And that was, a lot of information was presented there from Jason and from the LEDC and the individual company representatives that I think was very thorough and informative. Do we have any questions? The commissioners are here. Any questions from the public? Seeing none, this is a voice vote. All in favor? Opposed? That takes us to the second, similar item.
Yes, the second project is also under the same incentive program. And this is with Keymark Corporation of Florida. They have applied for a grant under this program in order to add new equipment at their existing facility at 2529 Night Station Road, and to expand into a new 76,326 square foot building that they will be constructing at 3155 Drainfield Road. If you're not familiar with Keymark, they are a manufacturer of aluminum products that are created through an extrusion process that pushes heated aluminum through a die to create a variety of products that are used in U.S. industries. They plan to add new equipment to their existing facility at the 2529 Night Station location, and also add, again, construct a 76,326 square foot building at the 3155 Drainfield Road relocation, or location. And they're going to add another line of equipment at that location to support their operations. They will create 25 new jobs at their facilities that will pay at least 100% of Polk County's average annual wage and plan to invest at least $30 million in capital improvements toward these new facilities. They have also required, applied for $400,000 in assistance under the program. They plan to use that assistance in order to perform relocation of electric lines and the construction of a new water line that are necessitated by their projects. And this is similar to the previous agreement in that upon their completion of the construction of facilities and proof of a CO, they would then be awarded the grant funds in the amount of $400,000. That's requested or recommended for your approval.
Have a motion?
Moved over.
Have a motion?
Go ahead.
And a second? Any discussion among commissioners? Any from the audience? Seeing none, this is also a voice vote. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, thank you. Again, I'd like for Jason to come up and explain a little bit about how we get these funds and how we've got some reserves for additional stuff like that while we have him here and the general public get a chance to get a little background on our program.
Thank you, Mr. Willey.
Thank you, Commissioner. For the record, Jason Willey, Community Economic Development Department. So, you know, we talked a little bit on Friday. We were fortunate to have some of the companies that are receiving these funds and that applied for these incentives were with us. So to your question, this dates back to a retreat previously, I think, from 2019. LEDC was involved, city staff was involved. We talked about an incentive that would be geared more towards some of our larger manufacturing businesses. And I think a lot of that discussion was really revolved around the value that our manufacturers bring to town in that the jobs and security that they bring with that, with the infrastructure that they use, and the city being the utility provider essentially for these, they commonly pay higher tax rates, tangible tax rates, water, wastewater, and electric charges. So the, this incentive was born out of that return on investment. If the city's going to use its own funds to invest and to incentivize certain companies, let's use utility money. And so, as you heard Palmer say, annually, $250,000 from Lakeland Electric, and then water and wastewater contribute 100 each, so 200 from Water Utilities, with 50,000 coming from the general fund. Clarifying on some of the companies that were here, really, it buttons up why we've been working with them for 10 or 12 months and going through this process. So Keymark is probably a top 12 utility customer with us with Lakeland Electric. Fresna being a new company coming to town, they're likely to be top eight, top 10 from the water and wastewater side. So both will be long-term substantial users that provide a great amount of value back to the city.
Thank you. And I think, again, Mike's not here today, but we have, his door right here said, I think we have about a million two left in that fund, so we can do this several more times if we need to.
Each year, LE and Water will budget those funds annually until such time the program ends.
But I think you're correct. That's got a balance today of, you know, up over $1,000,002, $1,000,300, right around that area. So we're allocating funds for two separate projects, but there is a balance that's left over that's still usable. And then ideally, as we work towards this next coming fiscal year, we'll have the same conversation, as Dieter said, to reallocate another 500. to reallocate another 500 back into that account.
Right.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
A question. And forgive me, folks. How many projects do you do a year typically?
So of these type of projects, um, we're, we're lucky to do a couple in a year. And really, it's timing. You know, we, we heard some of the stories on Friday of, of Fresna, you know, coming from an international base and then coming to the state of Florida. You know, when a group like that comes, they will come through the, the state's Enterprise Florida Economic Development Arm saying, we're a company that's this big, we're going to hire this many people, we need this much acreage, we need this much utilities. From there, they might get 25 different cities in the state that are eligible to compete with them. And so we were, we were on that list. And, and I think that's when we heard the LEDC, along with the Central Florida Development Council, start talking about bringing them into town and doing tours on different buildings to really see if, if Lakeland was the right fit for what they are doing. So we might do several in a year, but they're not fast. You know, larger projects like this, we work on for, for several months before we can get to a point to bring them to you to really talk about, and we can see them getting close to an opening.
Thank you. Jason, am I correct? This is the first two we've had since 2019.
This specific incentive, these are the first two that we've.
So it's, it's not, we're lucky to get one a year.
Exactly.
Thank you.
And Jason, the, the, the city used to provide incentives to manufacturing-type companies that were looking to relocate in, in the city of Lakeland through the state's Qualified Target Industry Program. And you may want to just mention that that's.
Yeah, and y'all remember, so the, the state of Florida had a, its own Economic Development Tax Incentive Program that was called Qualified Target Industry, QTI. And we commonly would do a couple, one, two, three of those a year that were similar type agreements that would be qualified for manufacturers, for office, a number of just different target industries. That incentive sunsetted from, uh, Tallahassee, probably in 2020, maybe the end of 2019. And so that incentive has not come back yet. And so I think that really geared around a lot of the, the city's conversation for us controlling our own availability with incentives.
Well, just follow up first. There's no sunset for this program, is there?
The one for the city?
No.
Manufacturing, no. We don't have a sunset. Because they just came about too, from the strategic plan of 2019. So that was my first strategic plan meeting, and LEDC did a good, you know, informative piece for us as Commissioners. Yes, Commissioner Reed.
Jason, was, was that program, what was predicated just on employees and their, and their pay rate, pay scale?
So that was kind of an either or, a combination of three. So it could be.
Another one we're doing now is on three.
Oh, the QTI.
But there, there was one, or maybe we still do it, predicated on if somebody comes to jobs and going to have so many jobs, we'll incentivize them for three or four years, predicated. Is that something different than the one we're talking about? In Tampa, does that leave, the state has sunsetted?
So the, the one that got sunsetted from the state was wage-based. And so you had to be a qualified industry, but then you had to have jobs that, that paid at a certain level that we would incentivize. So an existing program that we still have is PCBI, so it's Polk County Bonus Incentive. It's very similar to that, but it's, it's more locally controlled, and it's between the city and the county. That's an incentive that we use as a tool that is available to us that is more wage-based when we deal with companies that are within those target industries of folks that we would want to attract.
So we have two different mechanisms to facilitate benefits for people coming in as well?
And we have a number of others, and, and we can, we can get into impact fee mitigations. And there's, so there's a handful, but, you know, we, we try to do it so we're really geared towards a number of different industries that we, we can balance out the economy with.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience or comments? Seeing none, this is a voice vote. All in favor? Opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. So that brings us to Deidra for, or sitting in for our Finance Director. On Friday, we had a discussion about items 7A and B, their Budget Carryover Funds and Appropriation of Increased Estimated Revenue. And we pulled those from consent because we wanted the public at large to understand what those look like and what they represent before he say anything, Deidra. Kelly, are these, this is not on my agenda, is this a voice or roll call for both of these?
These are both voice.
They're both voice, thank you. All right, Deidra, thank you for being here.
You want me to explain the carryover process?
That would be great if you could take budget carryover first.
Okay. So the budget carryover process begins around September. We have an internal software system that we use. Each department will be provided a list of available projects to be carried over. We don't typically carry over operating expenses unless they're encumbered or there's special extenuating circumstances as to why the department could not spend that budget and/or they do not have budget for the current year for that particular item. So the majority of the carryover projects are multi-year projects or projects that will cross fiscal years or items that were donated, funds that were donated or confiscated by LPD. So those lists are prepared by the Finance Department. They send out to the departments, and they have to formally request the carryover. It is approved by, there's three levels of approvals by the manager, the finance director, and the city manager, the city manager's office. And we compile the list to present to the City Commission for approval.
Thank you. Questions for Deidra? We had a lot of comments and questions about this on Friday, which is why we pulled it off consent. And some good discussion came about with that. Anything anyone wants to add or ask? All right, any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, this is a voice vote to approve the budget carryover funds. All in favor?
We have a motion.
Oh, sorry. I need a motion.
Moved to approve the budget carryover fund.
Thank you.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? All right. And then Deidra, if you'll do item B.
Okay. Again, throughout the year, the city receives various donations from private individuals that are designated for specific projects or expenditures at their, at the donor's request. These donations are not typically included in the original budget of the city because the dollar amounts cannot be anticipated. The city also receives reimbursements for certain types of expenses, mostly a reimbursement of overtime duties performed by Lakeland Police Department. These reimbursements and associated expenses are not included in the original operating budget of the city because they cannot be forecast accurately. The budgeting practice adopted by the city for these transactions is to present these donations and expenses, reimbursements, to the City Commission semi-annually, at which time the operating budgets are amended accordingly. It is requested that the City Commission authorize an increase in estimated revenue in matching appropriation to the various operating budgets of the city as required based on the attached listing of donations and expense reimbursements received for the six-month period beginning April 1st, 2022, through September 30th, 2022. And there's a list of the various appropriation requests and reimbursements.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
And a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Simmons. Is this, I have a question. Is this reflected anywhere on our website where people can click through the Budget and Finance Office? Or is it through, where can this be found online?
Now, these items are typically not budgeted because of the, you know, the unpredictability. Someone may donate money, or the police may work an overtime detail.
Right.
So these are more of an internal expense that, and they're not budgeted. So these would be more of actual expenses that are captured and actual revenues that are received.
And then where would it be reflected online, is my question?
It would not be reflected.
It would be in the commission agenda, so this is kind of like a true-up. So as we know about it, we true it up with this agenda item.
And so people could, the public could click on our agenda item and click on the highway link?
On the, the item, and it would have it.
Yes, great, awesome. Yes, Commissioner Madden.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So just as an example, so like the Lake Morton neighbors are collecting money for lighting the trees. And so then that's going to be coming in, and it's going to be a donation. But, you know, you don't know when it'll, if it'll be enough, or if it's not, it's going to be returned. So you're, I just wanted to give an example to the public of sometimes where you have a fund, or like the Cultural Center, you know, where you're raising funds, and it's philanthropic and charitable, and you have this fund coming in, but it's not until that's complete or until it needs to be expended that then it comes on this list. Is that correct?
Correct. As we collect the funds, we would request appropriation for the expenses related to the purpose around the collection of those funds. So we would bring something like that to the City Commission for appropriation. Then we would have the authorization to spend the funds.
Okay. And these are the spent funds?
Correct.
Other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public? It's gotten a little thin out there. Seeing none, if this is a voice vote, all in favor? Opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you, Deidra, for pinching for us. We have nothing under item eight, utility. And now we're to the audience portion of our meeting. If anyone would like to address the City Commission, please come forward, and you have five minutes. State your name and your address. Seeing none, now we're to Mayor and Members of the City Commission comments. I'll jump it down. All right, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I just wanted to kind of say that it has been very exciting, very busy in the last several months. And, you know, COVID has iteratively been finished, but this fall has seemed to be everything, everyone's fundraisers, their annual events, their groundbreakings and ribbon cuttings.